So we have everybody here, so we'll open the December twenty first. Hamilton Planning Board meeting on the agenda is continuation of the senior housing special permit for one thirty-three Essex. We have John Prulidge as a special guest to make a presentation. On town finances and then. Bill has got a short presentation he would like to make as well. So we'll do a roll call. Starting with Marnie, why don't we start with you and then?
Marnie Crouch present.
Amal?
Amal Dalquus present.
Corey?
Corey Bullwye present.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton present.
Patrick?
I'm here.
I'm sorry, Patrick Norton.
Pat Norton here.
Okay, Richard Boroff?
Richard Boroff here.
Have I forgotten anybody? Oh, yeah, Jonathan Por, sorry.
Jonathan Por here.
You moved on the gallery. All right, I think I think we got everybody. Um, all right, so um. The applicant Larry Smith and Joe Mann have asked for a continuance of the. Discussion and hearing on one thirty-three Essex. So um, we'll need to take a vote to continue that and. Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, the next meeting, the January fourth two thousand.
That is correct.
Okay, so again, we'll do a roll call vote to approve the continuance of the applicant's special permit for one thirty-three Essex Street. Barney?
I I approved the continuance. I would just hope that if. The planning board was in need of a continuance, we would receive the same courtesy, but I have absolutely no problem with a continuance.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan Por?
I have no problem with it, so I I support it.
Okay, Amal?
No problem with the continuance, thank you.
I'll take that as a yes.
Yes.
And Corey?
Corey Bullwye, I.
Okay, Bill?
Bill Wheaton.
Patrick? I'm sorry, Patrick, Pat Norton, sorry, I've got a. I'll call you Pat and Patrick, so.
I'm not sure I vote, I don't vote.
That's all right. We want to acknowledge your presence and participation. Oh, Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
Okay, I think we got everybody. Oh, Rick Mitchell, I. So um, we will continue the hearing. For one thirty-three Essex on January fourth. That means for the rest of the meeting, we will not be talking about any specifics about this. Project whatsoever. So I'd like to move on to John Prulidge, who has been gracious enough to join us. John is a member of the. Hamilton Finance Committee. And John, I'm going to introduce you, and if there's anything else you want to preface your. Presentation with, that would be great. I'm hoping, you know, we'll probably take what, ten or fifteen minutes for this at max?
Uh, yeah, probably. I've got a quick sort of overview slides I can run through really quickly.
Yeah, so you're gonna, somebody is Patrick, or can you share your screen?
Yes, I have the screen share, multiple participants can use simultaneously. Command provided, so. All right. All right, can anyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right, let's let's jump right in. Good evening, everybody. I I. The purpose of this presentation is really to give the planning boards sort of an overview of what the FinCon has been working on, really for the last. Couple of years. And it's really how to build a a sort of better forecast. Um, really, that's really evolved into what we're calling the forecasting tool. Which I think Patrick may have sent that around to you earlier today. And we'll jump into the actual tool really briefly at the end, but I wanted to give you sort of an overview of really what it is and what it's meant to be. So, you know, in terms of the goals of the. It's really trying to create a framework for analyzing and modeling the future effects of. Major decisions by the town on on spend. And one of the major reasons for that is oftentimes major decisions by the town. Are oftentimes analyzed in a in a vacuum.
John, can you hold on a second?
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, anybody that's not speaking, please mute, otherwise you're interrupting the presentation. Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Sure. But oftentimes, these these decisions are sort of analyzed in the vacuum. We just look at the potential costs of. The actual project or the actual spending decision or other decisions that that may affect the financial. Situation of the town, and we don't look at the big picture where everything else is involved. Um, the other goal of this tool is really to focus on what matters most to people, which is tax rates and overrides. And finally, the it's really the usability and maintainability of these models. Um, are are paramount, because you need to have enough detail to make it useful. But if it if you have too much detail and it's sort of, it'll basically implode upon it's uh, due to its own weight. One key thing is is what the tool actually is not. Um, it's not a prediction of the future, and it's not meant to be the singular forecast. Of the town's financial situation going forward. It projects out scenarios five years into the future. But it's not meant to be this one absolute look into the future. Um, it's really meant to be, and I'll stress this several times, it's a tool for forecasting, not a forecast in and of itself. And it's it's a way, and we'll dig into the model in a second, well, you'll you'll see, it's a way to do sort of a scenario analysis. And look at many different scenarios to help in the decision-making analysis as well as is discussion. Um, at a at a sort of, you know, board level, resident level, et cetera. Um, and finally, what the tool really is all about is 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 helping set goals, make decisions. Do planning, set policies, as opposed to taking a snapshot of what we, you know, predict the future to be. In terms of the methodology that we used, most forecasts that the town has either maintained in the past, FinCon has maintained in the past. Suffer from, you know, a few issues that a lot of them, they depend upon prior year spending averages. To be indicative of of future spending. They do really bad job of modeling in large projects. And they have this sort of singular view of the future, which. Is is in our opinion, the wrong way to look at things. Um, and then oftentimes, they just have way too much detail, and thus they they don't get used at all. Um, so the FinCom tool is really meant to look at these multiple scenarios and allow people to. Forecast using different sets of assumptions, including setting your own assumptions. So that if people can agree, that may have different opinions on an issue or a project. But if they can agree upon the assumptions, at least it's a better way to actually start looking at the at the decision-making process. Um, and then also the the focus on the outputs that matter, which are, you know, tax rates, overrides, et cetera, what what. The average citizen is going to pay based on the decisions that are made. And getting to these outputs importantly, without needing a bunch of modeling skills. Um, so just as an overall status of where we are, we're really sort of at the beta version right now. Um, we're starting to roll this out to various boards. The planning board sort of early in the in the process, but the plan is to preview this with a bunch of different boards. Also residents as well, because we'd like to get this up on the website. Um, and then in the new year, hold a series of workshops, so that those that are interested in learning more about how to use it. Um, can certainly provide a feedback as well as get any questions answered. Um, we definitely want this to evolve, because this is really, this really is truly a beta version, and. I think this tool can get better the more people to take a look at it, stress test it, and come up with different ways to to use it. Um, first use case will definitely be in the the FY twenty-three budget process, which is really just starting to kick into high gear right now. Let me now. Everyone still seeing the PowerPoint or they actually seen the model now?
We're seeing, uh, thank you at the end of your presentation.
Okay. Bear with me for a second. There we go, you share. Okay, do you see spreadsheet now?
We do.
Okay.
Well, we don't, we we see, it's, yeah, we see the, I think, the output of the spreadsheet. We're looking at the five-year plan, I think. Yeah.
You, this should be, do you see, does it say version twelve, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two-one at the top?
It does.
Okay, yeah, so we're we're on the right tab. So I sort of have the the tabs at the the in the bottom sort of color-coded. To what really drives the model versus what is the the sort of plumbing of it. So this first tab, the assumptions tab, is really what you set all of your the assumptions that you want to.
Did you get it?
Yeah. In these, in in the models. So we've come up with. FinCom has come up with a set of assumptions that look at at many different things. Um, we've sort of labeled them as, for example, you know, high growth, high spend, low growth, low low spend, sort of mid-case. And then if you drill down into it, you can determine sort of what what things are driving the model. For example, increase in property valuation, which is more of a, you know, macro economic type of assumption. New growth in terms of sort of development in in town. Then, you know, key contributors right here are. Rate of spend in the future, town expenditures, as well as the school spend. So the different models that we've put out, different scenarios, have have these grow at different rates. Similar with revenue side of things, which a lot of it's about state aid, local receipts, et cetera. The other one I definitely want to highlight is this capital plan priority spending. So the way the model works, and I'm going to switch tabs just for a second, is. The, this is the Capcom, the town's cap capital committee. It's their version of a sort of five-year plan of of capital spending. Um, it's not necessarily all the spending that's recommended. Really, the way the Capcom works, for those that might not be familiar, is. They try to identify projects. They sort of vet projects, but then the key thing that they do. For FinCom and for our model is, once they've identified projects, what they do is they set a. Priority for the the funding of these projects, as well as then a source of funding. Um, they may be debt, they may be free cash, they may be, you know, annual capital spend, et cetera. The line items in here then roll through the model, and we'll get to the output in a second. But the key assumption here is this sort of capital plan priority spending. So the way it works is if in your scenario, you pick a one, you're only funding. Projects that have an absolute necessity, or a level one that the Capcom sets. Um, for another scenario, for example, this, you know, high. Basically, all all priorities, you're basically funding everything. Those will then obviously roll into the model, which for each of these scenarios, you have a detailed. Basically. Spreadsheet that goes essentially municipal financing.
You muted.
This to revenue, looking at. Then outputs a tax rate. I'm going to skip over this because. This is something that has way too much detail, so what we've done is summarize this in an output tab. Which really focuses on, I think, what most people want to look at, which is, under these scenarios. After you've set these assumptions, what then is the output? So, for example, in a high-growth, high-spend, your tax rate, as you see. Is actually not going to go up very much, because your your growth is matching your spend. That being said, because you're spending at a high rate. You are going to have overrides, because you're going to be above that, generally above that two and a half percent threshold. Whereas low growth, low spend, your tax rate's actually going to go up. But you're not going to hit any overrides, because your 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 growth rate is still low. This one, which is sort of the scenario E, the doomsday scenario, is sort of a, if you have low growth. Macroeconomically, and property values are not going up, but you're spending at an exorbitant rate. That actually even gets you to, and these are highlighted in yellow, these tax rates, because they're not even possible legally. Like, your your cap is twenty-five dollars. At that point, the state will force you to lower your spending. This column here, the scenario F, is really the the do-it-yourself, if you look at the. Uh, assumptions tab, which we we want, we'd like people to use this then to come up with their own assumptions. They could even as well, they can add spending line items to their. Capital committees to look at big projects. So you could put a big project in here, as long as you set a funding source and a priority. It will then flow through all of the scenarios and give you sort of a the output. Um, so most people that would use this actually don't have to go and do anything with these detailed scenarios. They really just need to set their assumptions, set, you know, add in any project spending, any, you know. Capital spending, any any large projects, and it will flow out the the output on the other side. So the reason why, and just taking a step back here, that we look at. Sort of all these scenarios together, because it helps then look at, okay, as you can see here. We've seen, we've modeled out a bunch of different types of scenarios, as well as do it do it yourself, which. Sorry to switch tabs here, has roughly, we are just starting the budget process, but. This is sort of where the school spending, their, you know, initial presentation. Town, we think, might be in this range, but it might even be a bit higher. And as you can see, over the next five years. We may avoid it based on this this scenario, and the assumptions that are underlied. We may have avoided override this year, but we're likely to have overrides for many years in the future. As you can see here, because it's all color-coded, a lot of these scenarios involve. Potential overrides in the future. But, you know, at the end of the day, this is all about, you know, you know, using this in a variety of ways. Analyzing, hey, if we if we layer on a, you know, ten, fifteen million dollar project that is, you know, financed over thirty years. What effect is that going to have with everything else going on? Or maybe it's two or three projects. I know this kind of thing happens all the time. It happened in the debate over the, you know, the town hall renovations, when a lot of the people that voted against it. Um, said, well, it's it's basically taking away spending from another project. Where with a model like this, you could look at, how does financing both projects at the same time work out, and is that something tenable? Um, because it's a legitimate concern on the on the part of. Uh, people that are, you know, may prioritize one spending over another. Um, so the point of the 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 model is is then to, you know, look at those. Under a variety of sort of economic scenarios, what is the output of that going to be? Another use of the tool at a sort of high level is, okay. We we do a, you know, when we dig into the budget. At the, you know, select board level, at the FinCon level, with the school committee. We're really focused on usually that one year. And in some sense, we really need to take a step back and and think about, okay, if, you know. We may be talking about this one year in terms of what these spending increases are. But when we look at over, you know, five years in the future, if we continue to fund at these levels and. Grow gross spending at these levels, what is that going to mean for the taxpayer? What is that going to mean to their tax rate, and even more importantly, their, you know, their tax bill? Um, because these are not, you know, insignificant increases that, you know. Are potentially we're going to have if we continue to spend at the level that we've been been spending. So that at a sort of high level is the is the usefulness for the the model. This is, there's a lot of detail in it. We tried to essentially. Up-level the output so that it's, um, you know, useful by someone who doesn't have a bunch of modeling skills. Because all they really have to focus on is this assumptions tab, and they'll get the output right here. Um, that being said, we, you know, we will be looking to workshop this and. Take this among the other boards and and the residents of the town. Um, so we definitely look forward to to feedback on this, because I'm sure there's there's things we can. Uh, make more clear or, you know, model a different way. So we certainly welcome. Um, all sorts of, you know, feedback and comments. Um, and I guess I'd open it up to questions if anyone has them.
So, John, just a quick question for the people that haven't seen this before. Um, which case is the most likely case, given what you now know and the assumptions you used of the five that you've. Uh, shown on this?
I would say the probably the do-it-yourself as it's as it's currently modeled. Mainly because that's got the the proposed. School spending. So it's somewhere between probably mid-case and the do-it-yourself scenario F. That being said, the the one major caveat of that is a lot of the. The Capcom has, they've sort of updated their model so that it looks out five years. But they haven't finished their work for this budget season, so a lot of the data that's in in the Capcom model. Is is actually outdated. So there could, they could be layering on a bunch of projects here, for example. Due to its failure to get approval, the town hall is not right now model actually in the in the Capcom plan. The school capital spending, which is at the bottom of this Capcom tab, is. Their sort of latest plan of record, but that could definitely change. And, you know, on top of that, there's a bunch of things that might not be in here that we need to start, you know, digging into. Um, for example, this is the combined sort of school really has. A bunch of smaller items in it. I don't think it has the full amount, which may be proposed for turf fields. It certainly doesn't have any future spending on new schools. I I should say school renovations, et cetera. Um, so there's a bunch of projects that could be in here to make. Um, which all of those projects obviously are going to be then output in higher spending rates. So those are the kind of things we need to start as we go down the path, because a lot of those things are not going to necessarily be. Accomplished in the next year, but we need to start looking at what are the ramifications for those in, you know, the next four to five years.
Other board members have questions? Wow, you've done an excellent job, John. If nobody has any questions, um, I did.
I've put people to sleep.
I did hear one, there was one, uh, could you explain the new, this is from the chat, could you explain the new growth assumptions? That actually would be of interest to us as well as.
Yeah, so the, and let me just dig into one of these scenarios. Where new growth affects the model is is really in this calculation. For prop two and a half for for over calculations. So, um, in order to focus, you know, forecast where we're going to be in terms of an override. You need to, part of that formula is not only the spending from the prior year. But let's say then give you two and a half percent on top of that, new growth is then added to that. So the more new growth there is, the more that you can spend without an override. In terms of how we've modeled that, if you see here, the.
I I think the question, John, is not how you modeled it, where did you get these, how, where'd you get these assumptions? What are they based on?
Could I interject it? How do you define new growth?
That's what we're trying to get at.
Right.
Yeah, so new new growth is, it's generally, my understanding of the definition, and there's a precise one from the.
John, you cut out.
You still hear me?
Yeah, you gotta speak into your speaker, I think.
Yeah, it's it's really the the additional developments that are added to the tax rule. Um, usually this is for a town like Hamilton, it's residential. Um, so it's not necessarily someone renovating their house or adding somehow adding value to an existing structure. It's really for new structures. So if you look at this tab, if you look back and you can basically go back the last four years. We've sort of been in this, and it varies every year. You know, I think if you average that. Average is about two hundred and fifty thousand per year over the last four years. Um, so in terms of assumptions we made, oftentimes we've used. I think. Yeah, two hundred thousand we used for that, maybe we should have used two hundred and fifty thousand. It's been slightly higher over the last four years, but really the way we're looking, you know, came up with these. If the mid-case is sort of somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand, a high-growth. Um, economy booming scenario, you might be adding. More than that at a higher growth rate. Certainly, in a low-growth scenario, you might have virtually no bills in a town like ours. Um, granted, if you, this is mainly focused on residential. If there were, you know, commercial new builds, that would also, you know, you could have outliers here where you're going to have. A lot of, you know, new growth in one year. If it's.
John, a question, is this, is this new growth is from new construction, not growth of the existing tax base?
That's that's correct, exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? From the board? Uh, let me look at chat.
John, I have a question, Pat Norton here.
Sure.
Yeah, so one of the, I guess, for the town hall project, one of the considerations was. Uh, is is that project taking away money that would otherwise be used for for school systems? That was one of the controversial things in the town, right? Does this tool, I I guess, is this tool. Useful in either supporting that analysis or somehow better understanding where the buckets of funds are coming from? Or are there separate budgets that you have to kind of stay within those restrictions of, you know, I guess I wondered if this. Tool would help either have supported that town hall renovation or. Uh, help educate people how the, how it might, you know, affect the school funding situation.
No, that's a great question, Patrick, and it's also sort of one of the reasons underlying. The art, the the tool, because as those debates happen, you know, you had a lot of people, certainly proponents, that said. You know, look, it's not spending on the town halls and taking away from other projects. Well. Um, that might be the case, at least my personal opinion is, you you can't really say that. You can't really say that until. You put a bunch of projects in there and then look at what you're going to forecast the output to be, and can you live with that? If you can't, if you don't want to live with that, you know, that tax rate, then maybe it is, then you've got to prioritize. So I I think it's a, there's no real easy way to answer that question. But the only way to start answering that question, and because it is the right question to ask, is to start to get these projects on the table. Start understanding how these things are all going to play together, or if they're not going to play together, or if they're not going to play together, then it's. It's a matter for the the town and its residents to start prioritizing things. And I and I think that was, you know, that that certainly was a problem for the the town hall renovation, was that it was sort of the first project. That was baked in a sense, and there's a lot of other things that the town, you know, potentially has to spend money on that aren't necessarily baked. Which, as the more planning we do and the more that we, those those. Um, which, as the more planning we do and the more that we, those, those projects become, at least we understand the, the, the size of them, putting them in a model like this and then starting to have that, um, you know, debate and discussion, uh, is really only going to, you know, help answer those questions. But that's, I mean, you, that's, that's the magic question right there, which is, you know, in, in a vacuum, no, nothing is, you know, necessarily affects something else, because we don't have specific, you know, restrictions or guidelines on budgets. But if you spend on everything, then it's going to have, you know, horrible consequences, so you need to be looking everything, um, sort of full list.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, uh, any, any last questions? I, I don't know if that was a question or some background noise. I'm going to assume that's background noise. Um, well, I appreciate your, um, taking the time to show us this, um, model. Um, I thought it was important for the board to see it since the only much ninety-seven percent of the town's revenue, revenue, revenue comes from, uh, residential property taxes. So it's important for us to understand whatever we're doing, what the potential impact is, uh, on the town's finances.
Yes, Rick, and that's, uh, that, that's a great point, which is, I, you know, I, I certainly encourage people to, even though it's designed to essentially put your assumptions in and get an output, but to, you know, dig into this scenarios and dig into the, to, to the, uh, um, the way that the town finances work, because those kinds of, um, um, realities for a town like Hamilton, um, that, you know, we really have to grow, um, we either have to control spending or we have to find a way to grow revenue. Um, or, you know, the future is, uh, um, going to be problematic in terms of tax rate and overrides.
All right, very good, appreciate it. Um, I thank you so much, and if people have questions, they can contact the FinCom or um, you directly, right?
Abs- absolutely, and there'll be, there'll be more about this as, uh, as we sort of roll it out to the, uh, community at large.
Okay, thank you again.
Excellent, thanks, everyone.
All right. All right, we're back, um, and now, um, I think, uh, Bill, you wanted to, um, make a presentation?
Uh, yes, Rick, uh, can I share my screen?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay, um, before I do that, um, my presentation is really very timely in regarding to, uh, John's, uh, spreadsheet, because one of the arguments that's been made for many years is that Hamilton is between a rock and a hard place a bit, because it doesn't have any commercial property, which is particularly, can be very revenue enhancing to the town's tax base, and also at the same time not use any, or use negligible amounts of local services. Uh, our northern neighbor Ipswich has been more successful at attracting commercial development. Um, there is, of course, New England Bio Labs. I don't know how many people on this Zoom know that New England Bio Labs is doubling their footprint and adding, uh, probably as much as fifty million dollars of taxable property, uh, mostly wet labs, uh, to the existing facilities that they already have there. But the other news that, that sort of happened in the last, uh, couple of months is that, uh, an estate property, not quite as large as the original New England Bio Labs pro- property, but an estate property along Walding Field, um, was sold or is under agreement to create another, uh, uh, sort of grand estates conversion of a residential property to a commercial property. Um, can everybody see this, uh?
Yep.
Sharing, okay.
Yep.
Um, so the property under consideration is, uh, on Walding Field. Uh, I'm not sure, fifty-five, it's a, it's a big stone building. It was, the previous owners tried to sell it for ten million dollars, uh, as an estate. They lowered it down to five million dollars and along came a company called Ocular Research Associates, otherwise known as Aura, which has a headquarters out on one twenty-eight and North Andover, on four ninety-five. And they proposed to buy the property to do some extensive renovations. Not as large and, uh, an expansion as New England Bio Lab, uh, did. Um, but it would, uh, it would, it would bring, you know, a lot of commercial tax revenue into the town. Uh, and in addition, it would create, um, quite a few jobs, uh, fifty, sixty, seventy, uh, permanent jobs in the town of Ipswich, high school job, high skill jobs. So here's quickly what they proposed. Um, let's see if. Okay, this is how we're going to do it. Um, this is the, the property fifty-five Walding Field. Uh, it's, uh, forty acres, there's a series of gatehouses and an old somewhat dilapidated barn here, and then there's the biggest state up in this area. Um, some of the land has already been conserved, that's the land here. The proposed project has, again, here's the estate houses, these are the ancillary houses, it's the entrance house, entrance house down here, the estate house up here. A proposal is to expand the land that was conserved by this addition, already conserved, uh, back here by this, uh, additional, uh, greenland and to create a trail system around it, and then to do a series of extensive renovations.
Previous thing. The guy was saying, here's a spreadsheet.
Excuse me, somebody's on, somebody's on, not on mute.
Yeah, uh, if, if somebody is, uh, not presenting, could they please make sure they're on mute? Thank you, go ahead, Bill.
So the, 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 you know, there are these different projects, the renovation of the estate and the creation of the, uh, of a new set of labs actually down where there is a, an old horse barn. Uh, I'll just run through it, this is the estate building, it's very large, it's ten thousand square feet, it's masonry. It's, 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 it's easy to adapt it to, to pretty intensive commercial use. Um, this is the proposed plan, uh, with offices and lab space. Um, a, a modern addition along the back. Uh, there's the existing building, what it will look like with the additions. Uh, it'll all be very, very well preserved, uh, it's quite nice. And these are the additions, and then down at the entrance, uh, to the property, there's a proposal to build a new barn. Uh, and a set of labs that actually look like an antique house, the, this one. And that's really quite remarkable. Um, the, you know, and this is what the, what the barn area would look like. Uh, this would be the new entrance gate down, down here. Um, eh, there's, there's a lot of money tied up in this project, and, and it would be lovely if the town of Hamilton could find some, uh, similar estate to con- to, to convert, this is all being done under the great estate law, uh, in Ipswich. The, the other interesting thing about this project was not just what the project is itself, but how the planning board in Ipswich approached the project. So when the petitioners came, their first reaction was, uh, you know, this is wonderful, and then they got a little bit into the project, and they realized, uh, two issues that really seemed to bother the board. And rather than getting into the details of the project first, they, they wanted to get these two issues, you know, sort of up on the table to examine them, and that was, you know, how much additional conservation land was going to be created and what kind of access there would be. Um, that, that was the first issue, and the second issue was parking. They were going to have parking and traffic, they were going to have, um, fifty visitors a day, some permanent people working there. Uh, you know, the traffic on Walding Field is a quaint little country road, it really is a, a quaint country road. Um, so by having the discussion at the beginning about how the board felt about the project as a whole, they were quickly able to get two issues onto the table. And, um, so now the, the petitioners are proposing to build, uh, underground parking uh, in back of the building, and also to talk with the DPW about what kind of significant upgrades or, you know, might be needed in order to, um, accommodate the traffic, this little scenic road. Um, but it's an interesting process, because they didn't get bogged down in the de- details. First, they went to the sort of general reaction of the board. Um, and I think it would, it seems to have worked very well, because the petitioners trying to go back to the drawing board and make some changes that will address those concerns, and then they can dig down deeper into, um, sub-studies and, and the specifics. Uh, but it's quite a project, and it would be, uh, wonderful to see this, we could find a project like this.
Well, just out of curiosity, it wa- it's my understanding that the property was landscaped by Frederick Law Olmstead? And I, and I also wonder whether they're preserving some of that landscaping.
They are, the, the, this is the, the Olmstead Gardens are here, and there's this, uh, alleyway that runs up. And they plan to keep these plantings intact, uh, even as they add open space along the edges.
And what's the house itself on the National Register of Historic Places, do you know?
I do not, I don't think so. And it's not a local historic district, it might be on the National Registry, I'm just not sure, but it's not in a local historic district.
Right, right.
Bill, I don't understand, why are we, why are we, wh- what, why is the presentation on this property, it's in Ipswich?
Well, because I think if, if there are, there, there, there's two things to consider. One is, do we have property like this in Hamilton? And should we, as a planning board, uh, consider maybe more proactively trying to encourage, uh, conversion of estates like this, uh, that would be the question. And then the second issue is, I was quite taken by, um, by the planning process that they used in Ipswich of, of getting to the big issues first and not getting bogged down in details. And maybe there's some lessons there for us.
If I may, I, I miss the end use of this property, what, what, what are they going to do with it? They're making labs to do what?
Uh, yeah, Aura is a, an, a biotech industry where the bio part is the study of the eye. And they have one, they're going to, they, they have high-tech lab space along Fort Ninety-five, and they're going to add some more lab space here, they're also going to la- add marketing and research divisions here.
Thank you.
So, um, Bill, thank you for making that presentation, and that certainly sets the table and, and two ways. One is, as you said, for process and how we approach large projects, and certainly is, um, thinking about how we do that. And the other is, uh, the great estates by law, it's been on the books probably more than ten or twelve years, that we have, I actually have a list of, uh, I think there are at least a dozen, it may be seventeen properties in, in Hamilton that have been identified as great estate candidates. Um, and part of the reason that that, uh, bylaw hasn't been used was very much like the Open Space and Farmland Preservation Development Bylaw. It was so convoluted and, uh, difficult to use that it really made, um, ma- it made it almost impossible for any estate owner or um, somebody that wanted to develop an estate like New England Bio Labs or this property that we were discussing to actually use it. So that's, uh, something, uh, definitely in the future that the board should look at and see if, um, we can, um, streamline that and make it more, uh, user-friendly. So, um, thank you, Bill, and I think it's important, because they're right, uh, Hamilton is right across on the other side. Almost on the other side, on the other side of Walding Field, so. All right, very good, um. And, um, now we want to go to board business and the upcoming ascan- schedule and, uh, items that will be on that schedule, and Patrick, I'm going to turn this over, Patrick Raffet, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Rick, uh, real quickly, uh, and I don't say this to spur discussion, uh, just for scheduling and planning purposes for January the fourth. Uh, the one thirty-three Essex Street applicant, uh, has been working on a uh, completely revamped entryway, uh, to their project. So that will be before the board on January the fourth, which is our next meeting. Uh, I don't have any design plans on it yet, uh, but as soon as I get them, I will send them out uh, for people's, uh, uh, ability to preview those before the meeting. Next, uh, I did, uh, want to mention that, um, the, uh, the farm there on the, uh, or the, the patent property, which uh, is, uh, now owned by the, uh, uh, Essex County Green Belt folks, uh, they are, uh, leasing to a young couple who, as I'd mentioned to the board a few weeks ago, uh, they wanted to do, uh, a site plan, uh, which needs to come before the board. Uh, and I expect they'll be either at our meeting on the fourth or the one, um, uh, that would be following that, I think that's going to be, um, uh, January the twenty-fifth, I believe. So, um, I did want to mention those two things. Um, I did put together a schedule, uh, based on some of the, uh, issues and, and complications brought about by, um, Monday holidays, which, uh, sometimes the Board of Selectmen uh, decide, well, we want to meet that week, uh, in spite of the Monday holidays. So they have a, uh, a meeting scheduled for the Tuesday, which ends up bumping us. So I have sent out to each of you, uh, board members, a draft twenty, twenty-two planning board schedule. Um, you'll see, I've got some, uh, uh, circle dates on there that illustrate planning board, um, H for holiday, P B for planning board, B O S for select board. I think that we've got some, uh, a conservation commission, uh, date uh, that, uh, complicates this a little bit in June. And I also, uh, uh, note that on the second Tuesday in November, which is November the eighth, uh, there is, uh, they, they're keeping that open as a, uh, an election date, uh, if necessary. So, uh, I did want to point out in January, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, our two meetings would be on the fourth and, uh, on the twenty-fifth. Again, um, because the holiday, uh, comes up on the seventeenth, the Board of Se- of Selectmen would be meeting on the eighteenth. Uh, so, um, I, uh, communicated with the chair, so we thought that the twenty-fifth would be the appropriate thing to do.
Okay, very good, did, did everybody get that, um, that copy? That, um, draft? Schedule? Okay, I see nodding heads, so, good. All right, and I think the last piece of business is the, uh, minutes of December seven.
I'm Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Go ahead, Marty. I'll go after you.
I wanted to, and I, I take no pleasure in revisiting this issue, but at the last meeting, I wasn't prepared to address this. But there was discussion that Mr. Boroff confused the special permit process with site plan review. And I investigated site plan review and it would not seem to be applicable to the comments that Mr. Boroff posted. In fact, I think what he was attempting to describe is actually the standards for approving comprehensive permits, which are determined by the zoning Board of Appeals. So I think that the solution that we derived at the hearing at the last meeting to post a correction might not actually do the trick. And then the other thing of concern, of course, is the letter from John Cole that indicated that Mr. Boroff has made these comments at other times and probably in other venues. So I wanted to take note of that. That, that in fact, what was described was not in fact, site plan review. It would appear to me more to be about affordable housing and how the zoning Board of Appeals goes about approving comprehensive permits. And with comprehensive permits, there is the consideration that approval, if it's required, can, or if conditions are imposed, they cannot be so onerous as to cause the project to be uneconomic.
Well, actually, there's probably a clarification to your clarification because I think probably what caused, and I can't tell exactly, but if you think about 5963 Willow Street, that was a project that the board looked at, that the zoning already allowed that. So it was a by right use. So the board could review it and condition it, but it couldn't turn it down. So that just adds a nuance to that. You know, the decision-making authority of the board.
Right. But I had the opportunity to look at the Site Plan Review Bylaw. And of course, it specifically says that the application can be denied. Or conditions could be imposed, but that, that's, I don't think that, that the post was in any way, shape or form clear with respect to site plan review.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree. It was, it was not fact, it was not factually correct and there was no framework to frame the discussion as to what it did or did not apply. And I, I think that Richard made that in error and I think he's admitted that error.
That's correct. I think this is really a move point.
So anything else, Amol, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, thank you. Firstly, firstly, I'd like to just comment on Bill's presentation a little bit. I think the the idea of a pre-application meeting is extremely important. I think the more that this board can can do along those lines would really benefit everybody involved in it. So I think that is a good, that was a very good comment on your part. But I had written a note to Patrick, being new to the board and just getting used now to the, the process. And he suggested I take it up at this, at this particular meeting. I think he copied you, Mr. Chairman, on it, on the letter. But it was an interest in streamlining the hearing process. And it was a suggestion on our weekly agendas, be refined and focused in two ways. One is to agree as a board in advance of the meeting on specific materials to be heard and/or discussed. And number two, balance available meeting time equitably between receiving new information, if available, and deliberating by board members. This, during the course of the hearings, it sort of goes through a transition, the initial part. The applicants are doing 80 to 90% of the talking at the meetings. And the board is doing a lot of listening. As you move toward the end of the process, it does a complete reversal. I think the board should be occupying a much higher percentage of the time. And what, what, what can happen, I think, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but a lot of times, what by not programming or scheduling in the minutes, time for the board to have internal discussions, what little discussion time is left will either be at the end of the meeting or just before we are required to vote on the overall project. So the request is really to, when we get an agenda, to actually program in time for board discussions just to ensure that that element is part of every single meeting. There are only a few meetings left going forward. But I think this could be, this could be sort of a format for any project we go forward with and in terms of evaluating. But to, to start a schedule where it's, it's more of a where everything is sort of programmed and the meeting is near as possible. Now, I understand things do happen, things come up. And there will be a departure from the regular agenda. I know that can happen. But I think it'd be beneficial to everybody, including the applicant, including the community, staff, and especially the board members to know how much time is going to be built in that would be available to prepare and discuss during the course of a meeting. So that was a letter I sent to Patrick, just offering that suggestion. And he said, bring it up at the board meeting. So that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I think it's a good suggestion and it's, you know, something we certainly definitely can incorporate into process. And I think as we started this process, actually, I think it was two or three meetings where actually the participants were feeling like they weren't being heard and by, I mean by public, that we actually said, we would try and section the meeting into, you know, with, you know, equal parts where the applicant made the presentation, the board had a chance to discuss among itself the issues, ask questions of the applicant and then and try and give an equal section of time to the public to ask questions. And fortunately, that is worthwhile. Any other comments?
I do think it's important to point out that information and applications that come to the town intended to be before the board, is it something that you can foresee? With two weeks of certainty and understanding ahead of time? For instance, Mass General Law allows for approval not required slash A and R applications to come to the town at that very meeting with no advance warning whatsoever. You know, so there, there are things like that that don't allow us the ability to get them, you know, understood ahead of time, studied ahead of time. I think on, you know, special permit projects, the way that we've been trying to look ahead with the applicant, with our peer reviewers, with board members in terms of what should we be discussing in this special permit project? There's some possibility within that process, but I will tell you that, you know, consultant products, consultant completion dates, they tend to be pretty fluid. And, you know, being really rigid as to what our expectations are in limiting discussions to things that actually end up happening in a perfect way. I just, I think we would end up protracting projects. I think that we'd end up with a lot of dead time, unfortunately. Sometimes you have to, you know, to have consultants and the applicant, you know, drop what they're doing that didn't get finished in time in order to allow the, the board and the public and our peers to review. And then you, you default back to what you already had received, but you haven't accomplished review on yet. So it's not a fluid process that we have. It's certainly not a perfect one. But I think that we try to do the best that we can.
I think that Bill Wheaton brought up a very elegant example of that process. And the point was before getting into all the details, looking at the big picture. And I, I think that's a, that doesn't have anything to do with whether the process gets interrupted or not. So yes, the process will get interrupted by ANRs or, or additional information coming in, whatever. But the idea is to prioritize looking at the big picture first in any project. And then that's exactly what Emile was talking about.
Good. And I do want to, I want to correct something that Amol kind of referenced there. We're not at the end of this by any stretch of the imagination. We've got a lot of work to do, a lot more hearings on this. I expect this is going to be going on for at least two to three more months before we get to the end of all the information and, and start thinking about, you know, a conclusion. So I just want to make sure that people are aware that there is a great deal of work that we have to do. And testimony that's going to be presented by both the applicant and certainly by butters and other parties. So there's a long way to go in this process.
Agreed. And what Emile was saying is to put it in the agenda so that there's an intention, even if it gets interrupted, it's there as an intention, it's programmed in. That's, I believe, what Emile is telling us and is, and also the wonderful example that Bill has, has given us. Bill, I think you were going to say something?
Just, yeah, I mean, I would support that. I think there's a need to have a little more internal discussion. And maybe even some give and take with the petitioner. As opposed to sort of just listening. Yeah.
And it sounds like that's what's coming. And again, we can't talk about this project in any specific, but it's Patrick is telling, telling us is that based on feedback we've given to the applicant about the entrance way, project being in need of redesign or being amended or modified or whatever words you want to use to call it, it sounds like they are, have taken that and then they're coming back with some revised designs. So, and I agree, Bill, absolutely. This should be give and take. And I, hopefully that's what we will see on the floor.
I have some, I have some further give ideas, but this is not a public hearing around 133 Essex. So I'm not going.
Right. Absolutely.
And I wasn't commenting on the 133 project. It's just a matter of having some predictability going into meetings, you know, what, what we need to prepare for in advance in order to have appropriate questions. And
Absolutely.
Predictability is important for, for a lot of us, I think. And, and I have no idea what the upcoming schedule is going to be. So.
But well, you know, interestingly enough, this is a wonderful point of discussion. We, we'd actually talked about in our last meeting that at this meeting, I think that we would begin, and it probably was a month ago that we had this discussion, that we would start looking at the blasting plan and hydrology and geohydrology. And that went out the window when the subconsultant could not, you know, perform. So I think, I know Patrick is trying to get some uniformity here and predictability to the best of, of everybody's ability. And everybody wants that. And we all want time to get these material, look at them and what's being presented and formulate intelligent, thoughtful questions. So that, that should be the process and to the greatest extent possible, will be the process.
Yeah, if that, if that task could be shared by the board, in other words, that maybe at one, at the end of one meeting, for example, talk about the future meetings coming up, you know, what, what are the options?
Yeah. And I, and I think we have been, but we can certainly do a better job of that. So shall we move on to the minutes? December 7th, 2021. Marnie, I'm going to defer to you and see if you have any comments.
No, I have no comments with respect to those minutes. I, I did review them. So they satisfied me. So it's up to the other board members. We also have to discuss the November 9th minutes. They had yet to be approved as well.
Okay. Are they, just because you have a better handle on this, have they been thoroughly reviewed?
They were circulated before the last meeting, but members did not have an opportunity to review them. So I'm hoping that the board was able to review both the November 9th minutes as well as the December 7th minutes.
Okay. Did people look at the November 9th minutes or have any comments on those?
Yes, I have a comment. And it may segue into another discussion, but we'll see where that goes. So on the November 9th meeting, minutes on page three, there's on the last, very last sentence on page three, it says regarding the, the checklist, there were two goals. Number one, outline all the aspects of the applicable bylaws to ensure they are satisfied. I would say instead of ensure they are satisfied, to agree on which ones are generally satisfied.
That makes sense.
Two completely different things, which segues into something that I also sent to Patrick and I think Rick, you received a, a copy of it, is a suggestion for positioning the checklist so that we don't inadvertently send the wrong message to board members, the public or the applicant that it is something that it isn't. Which is, it's, 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 it's a checklist of general patterns, general agreement. It's not a vote. It's not, and it's not a scorecard.
Right. It was a tool to make sure that we have gone through specific items related to the bylaw and that the board is generally satisfied with the information that has been provided or is looking for more information or has a question. And by as no means, means that the board made a final decision on the. I think that's what you're trying to, I think that's what you're.
Exactly what I'm trying to say. And so what I, what I would like to do is on the last sentences of page three of the November 9th minutes, I'd like to change the two words, ensure they and remove them and instead insert the words, agree on which ones are generally.
Yeah, I think. Any other comments on November 9th? Okay, so if those, with those amendments as proposed by Jonathan or are acceptable, I have a motion to approve November 9th minutes as amended by Jonathan.
I so moved.
Okay, second. Bill, you're, yeah, okay. Bill, you're muted. So if you want to say something.
I say that.
Okay, good. All right, roll call. We'll start with Marnie.
Marnie Crouch, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Amol?
Amol Dogg, aye.
Cory?
Cory W, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Rick Mitchell, aye. Okay. And then on to the December 7th, 2021 minutes. And I think you'd said, Marnie, that you're satisfied that those are accurate.
Yes.
Okay.
Then I make a motion to accept those minutes?
Absolutely. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Roll call, vote. We'll start with Richard.
Richard Boroff, aye.
Okay, Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Cory?
Cory W, aye.
Cory Bull, you, aye.
Amel?
Amel Dogg, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, aye.
And Rick Mitchell, aye. I, okay, so is there any other board business? That, uh, needs to be discussed? Patrick, is there anything you, um, I think we've discussed the schedule, next meeting?
My only wish is to hope everyone a happy holiday.
I I I second that. Um, I hope everybody is. Yeah, there you go.
I don't think, I I don't think we need a roll call on that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know, Bill, you've got a house full of relatives that you've got to get back and feed and and comfort and entertain, so. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I I have one more, one more thing I'd like to talk about, which is, um, both Emile and Bill had requested something and and I would love to talk about. How we prepare for next meeting and try to do, try to put in into action, into practice what's been talked about.
You've got the floor.
So the idea would be to see if we can get into the next, um, agenda. A schedule of time of, say, for example, a great approach would be. Maybe we give the applicant a certain amount of time to present the entry, which at this point is still a detail. It's a minor detail in the project. And we make sure that the board has some time to discuss, um. Larger considerations in the project, so so we can put this discussion into action right now.
I I think we've already agreed that we're going to do that.
Right, but the what what Emile was saying is let's agree in advance how how we do it. So the the way we might do that is we might, let's let's talk about. Um, how long the meeting is and how much time we'd like to allocate to each thing and agree on it. And then if something, if something gets in the way, that's great, but if nothing gets in the way, we have at least an intention that we can follow.
Okay, well, as we have heard from Patrick, that the applicant is going to be presenting a revised. Site plan. That could have significant ramifications on the entire project. So, um, that in fact could take the entire meeting. So, uh, and I think this gets to what Patrick was getting at. Because I don't want to stifle the board's questions nor the applicant's presentation nor the, um. Um, participation of the public who undoubtedly have comments as well as their legal representative. So we can state intentions. Um, but I think we can't be arbitrarily allocating time because we would be stifling what can be productive and help discussion. So I think we can set an agenda, understand what the ended topics are. As we have done in the past, and they have been changed because either the applicant or other people didn't have the information available. They're going to change. So I think.
Absolutely.
So to the greatest extent possible, we definitely will do that, and I am, I hear what you're saying and will be mindful of trying to balance that discussion. I'd like to think of, and the board is starting seven, I'd like not to go beyond nine o'clock because personally speaking. By that about nine o'clock and two hours of, but can be intense discussion and presentations. It becomes overwhelming at that point, so I'd like to limit meetings to two hours whenever possible. And take that two hours and then try and divide it as, um. Is, um. And what's the word? Frame it and say, as we did in response to comments by. The the public is that we cut it up into thirds, say, okay, applicant, you get a third of that time. Or we've got a third of that time and and public, you've got a third of that time. To discuss that, so I think we can have a backup topic in case we get through this new revised. Um, site plan. Um, and certainly if we can do that, that's great. The more we can get done, the better, but I, again, I I don't want to be too arbitrary.
I agree with you, Rick. I've been on a lot of boards and you really can't. Be too formal or too, uh. Uh, rigid on the way you present the material and so on. You've got to leave leave it open because you never know what kind of questions are going to come up. What kind of problems are going to have to be discussed? That's the whole point.
So.
At our last meeting, we requested that the applicant applicant submit, um, additional information. Uh, with respect to section eight point, one point twelve point one. Of the bylaws that's that's made applicable by the senior housing bylaws, so I think that might inform our discussion. I don't know whether that information will be incorporated in the redesign entranceway. But it would seem to me if we did get that information that we requested and that we do have a redesigned entranceway. That that it would be a very opportune time to have the. Discussion among board members of the, to use Bill's phrase, the bigger picture.
Yeah, that's fine.
I agree with Marnie's point that in a sense that's the first step and to get to dig into detail into the entry without that first step that has yet been presented. Is is not. Of an efficient or logical order, so that goes to exactly to my point. So, um, I'll I'll stop there. I've, I've conveyed my concerns. Um, I would just like to try to stay focused on the big, big picture, and Marnie just pointed to what the big picture is. That's first priority.
Understood. Big picture, it's about to be modified, so we need to understand what the big picture looks like. So we can have a big picture discussion on an accurate representation of the project.
Except the first step is not to look at the design, the first step is to look at the the resources. That's the first step before you look at the design, so that's my point.
Uh, I get it, um. So we'll, uh, we'll try and work that out at the next meeting.
Excellent.
All right, so.
I was just going to ask the board if, uh, if they found tonight's, and I'm not even sure it's our decision to make, but. I wasn't sure if the board felt like tonight's remote Zoom meeting was just as good or better than our hybrid discussions that we were having. At Town Hall for the projects or for the for the meetings moving forward.
I personally think it actually worked out just fine.
I I think I felt the same. It's good to see people's faces, too. I think we're still with the masks in the room. Well, I did give you a break. I have been letting people in. They've been coming and going for much of the meeting. Uh, and it's taken a certain amount of concentration. From someone who doesn't enjoy this media, but in any event, it has worked reasonably well. We have it dropped out and the sound hasn't been bad. Uh, we have had, uh, some excess background noise from some folks. Uh, but overall, it's been pretty good.
Yeah, and and I've been watching the number of participants has fluctuated around, you know, forty-five to fifty, so I think that's well within the. License we have of one, it's a hundred people.
It would be, it's, it would be interesting to see if the public, um, appreciates this format as well. Uh, I know we had one comment from someone who was frustrated because they couldn't, uh, discern who was speaking because we had masks on.
Yeah. And.
By the same token, the camera focuses, tends to focus on the person who is speaking, so you really do know who is speaking.
On Zoom, yes.
So my my question, and so. Pat Norton or Patrick or anybody else that knows him better than I do, um. Can we, uh, get the public who would like to actually make a verbal presentation or comment? Um, can we recognize them so they can do that in this formal?
This format, they can unmute themselves and talk, will, um. What would be preferred by me at least, uh, because even tonight when we discussed nothing of. Sort of contention, uh, we had several interruptions, whether. You know, that seemed in control or not, it's bound to be very, very out of control as we jump into more contentious topics. But the, um. The Zoom webinar allows us to establish the entire board as a panelist. Um, whether in the same room or remote. And keeps the level of control that we have on the hybrid meeting from the, uh. Memorial Room.
Yeah.
Corey, I was going to say the same, actually. The Zoom webinar, even if remote, also provides that same control and. Functionality, and I could help, uh, Patrick with the heavy lifting in the background. Um, so we could focus on the conversation if it helps, too.
You mean in the webinar format or in the? Or the Zoom form?
In the webinar format. I mean, it would operate the same, I think, in focusing on the speaker and. And whatnot, but it's just a matter of having that additional level of control that Corey.
Yeah, I think, I think you make a, you make a good point, Corey, is is because I'm sure when we get to contentious parts of this that. People feel very passionately about that we could get into some. A a lot of cross talk that could be, um, not productive.
So could we take a homework, maybe Patrick and I could. Could then investigate that further and and propose whether or not the next meeting becomes. I I guess the question was, is it up to us really, or are we forced by some?
No, we.
The board, the board can act independently as it sees fit, so it can best meet the needs of the process. And certainly of the public.
So, um. Yeah, I if you, Pat, Pat, if you could work with Patrick on that, I think that would be great. You know, I like this format. It's works very well, but. Um, I, again, I think you made a couple of good points. I do like meeting in person. Um, I. Absolutely would love to have all of these meetings in person with the public pending. But we're forced by the emergence of Omicron to start buckling back down again. So whatever best recommendation you come up with would greatly appreciate it.
One of the things that we can consider is that. Uh, it's possible to put up a chat. Column on the side of the screen. I've got that there now, and there's, uh, somebody named Dave, Al DeGroot is up, uh, somebody named John. Uh, Dave again, Liz, uh, Liz Arthurs. Uh, several people have comments here, and if we. We can monitor those, John Cole. Several people have comments and they can be, that could be monitored and brought into the discussion as well.
Um, yeah, and and so there's many ways to do this, so.
Yeah.
Decent point.
Yes. So, hey, Robin, if you're going to make a, there's you go. Uh, so, yeah, we'll probably, I I think, you know, we like this format, but, uh, I think, and and to John Cole's. Comment, we're not getting into open meeting law, whether it's two people or two hundred people. It has to be open to the public in whatever format that that works, so. And we've used the hybrid model relatively well going forward. So I'll wait your recommendation. So, uh. Anybody would like to adjourn the meeting? I think that would make sense. Don't you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Corey, you and I doing it at the same time?
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second Richard's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn, um, rather than doing a roll call, um. Does everybody want to raise their hand and say yes, uh, to adjourn? Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, everybody says yes, so it's unanimous to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, and have a happy holiday and see you next year.
Yes, happy holiday, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
New Year.
Christmas, guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye.